Calling to order the committee, the whole meeting for September 27th, 2012. Our clerk is not here this evening, so Mr. Searle, would you do the roll?
Mayor Ron is absent. Clerk Simmsky is absent. She's at a conference in Springfield. Trustee Emery?
Here.
Trustee Fleming?
Here.
Trustee Klebanow is absent. Trustee Nero?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
Trustee Seneca?
Here.
And then Manager Searle, myself is present. Attorney Zemnack?
Here.
Police Chief Mulhern?
Here.
Fire Chief Weiss?
Here.
Public Works Director May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Acting Community Development Director Malick?
Here.
And we have Village Planner Ziegler?
Here.
Who else am I missing? Got all the staff?
I think you got it.
Okay.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, open forum. I don't see any open forum requests this evening, so moving along, reports. The mayor's not here, the clerk's not here. Village Attorney, Mr. Zemnack?
And I have nothing to report.
Village Manager, Mr. Searle?
I do. I'd like executive session on personnel and the threat of potential litigation. Wanted to mention that we passed out a supplemental purchase order list in the amount of $106,691.16. Involves four purchase orders, one for C W, for software agreement, one for Cloud Sherpas, which is our Google Apps licensing for one year. And then we have two purchase orders to the same vendor for A Beeb LLC that has to do with an upgrade related to our radio system with the police and fire department. So it asks that we add those purchase orders to the agenda for Monday. Wanted to note that the finance ordinance for Monday is $913,045.84, and that will be noted on the agenda for Monday as well. And wanted to mention that we have been contacted by Holy Trinity, and at the next meeting we should have, just for informational purpose to let the board know, we should have some requests from them. They're having an Oktoberfest on October 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. And it's my preliminary understanding that they may be looking for street closure, they may be looking for amplification permit, and I don't know if the public works directors are aware of this at this point, but I had heard that they might ask if they could borrow a snowplow to do, you know, one of those painting contests like we've done with some of the other schools. So this is in process, and we'll have this for the next agenda. I just found out about this last night, and I won't say too much because I assume maybe trustee Seneca wants to comment, but we had the neighbors of that last night.
That's great, yeah.
But they approached me and mentioned this last night, so I wanted to let the board know. And that's all I have.
Trustee reports. Trustee Seneca?
Thank you. Just to piggyback off what Ron was saying, last night we had the launch of our new magazine, The Neighbors, for Westmont. It was wonderful. It was held at the BMW dealer. It was really well attended. All of the taxing bodies were represented. Several businesses came. I know Golden Basket was there, and Jay Flemings, and several others. It's the one, you know, there's many, many good things about The Neighbors magazine, and I'm really glad that we're doing it, but to me, the most important thing is this will be mailed to every single household in Westmont. So if you live in a condominium, you're going to get it. If you live in an apartment, you're going to get it. Right now, we're a little, it's a little difficult doing it through the water billing because not everybody gets a water bill. So this will be wonderful, and I think they're going to try to do, what, maybe December or run, for sure January?
It's definitely a January launch, but they're hoping to be able to get enough advertising support to maybe launch it as soon as December.
Be great. Really good.
They would love to do that.
And then I wanted to remind everyone that on Monday at 6:00, we will have a public safety committee meeting here in the executive session room. And then the last thing I have is just to remind everybody that the Westmont Chamber of Commerce is having their annual Oktoberfest this Saturday, the 29th, from 4:00 to 10:00, and it's going to be held at the Knights of Columbus. There'll be food, there'll be German beer, wine tastings, German music, dancing, so that's from 4:00 to 10:00. So always a fun event, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks. Trustee Scott?
Thank you. Next Wednesday, October 3rd, we're going to be having an economic development meeting here at the village hall at 9:00 a.m. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Trustee Nero?
I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
Trustee Fleming?
Well, unfortunately, I have a couple of kind of sad notes to say. We have lost a couple of individuals within the town. One of the gentlemen, every one in this town is known for many, many years.
Dennis Jordan?
Passed away, who has owned Westmont Pharmacy for many, many years. We will miss him. And the other gentleman who passed away very suddenly was Brian McElwain. And Mr. McElwain owns the building that used to be the Dog House. This was very sudden and unexpected, so my thoughts and prayers go to both families and hope that things going forward will do a little better. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing further to add, other than not, everyone here at the village sends their Any items to be removed from the consent agenda? The consent agenda is listed out, consisting of the village board minutes, finance ordinance, the purchase orders. Unfinished business. Preliminary TIF eligibility study discussion. Board to hear a presentation from TESCA Associates on the preliminary findings related to the feasibility of creating a tax increment financing district, otherwise known as a TIF district, in the area near the B1 Limited Business District, which is our downtown business district.
Good evening. Thank you. The board will recall earlier this year entering into an agreement with TESCA Associates to study the area generally around the central business district, the B1 Limited Business District, otherwise more fondly referred to as Downtown Westmont. Tonight, we have with us Khan Savoy from TESCA. He's the lead consultant on the project, and he's here to present the preliminary findings as far as whether the district would be eligible for this redevelopment financing tool. So with that, I'll keep it short and sweet and invite him up to the podium to present those findings.
Thank you, Shannon, and good evening, board. Good to be with you again. This presentation is going to be very similar to one that I've given you recently, well, somewhat recently, maybe a while ago now, several months ago, on the 63rd Street corridor TIF as well. And the reason it's similar is because the process we go through to establish the qualification for the downtown area are, as you know, pretty well prescribed by statute. There's not a lot of flexibility, i.e. not a lot of creativity in what we do. It's a pretty standardized process. The things I do want to say, though, about the importance of what the community is doing and looking at its downtown as a possible second TIF district is embedded, I think, in a couple of things. One, the fact that as early as 2000, and my guess is likely before that, but at least in terms of my memory, you had established a downtown plan, a vision for what you wanted as what was called then a transit-oriented development. And then in 2002, as I understand it, there was a facade improvement program and a Main Street process put into play and facade guidelines, all of those indicating the community was serious about recognizing, one, that the downtown, there were issues in the downtown that suggested it was in a state of decline and needed some assistance. So the point is, this is a, what, a good 10-plus-year idea, and the fact is, you know, downtown hasn't really taken off, and in some cases, we've seen some new development, yes, but overall, we haven't really seen the extent of the development that I think the community had envisioned. I clearly think that's true if you look at the 2000 plan. So this is really a statement about the community initiating a process like TIF to now think about, what do we do to kickstart that process to achieve the vision that you, you know, believed in and supported that many years ago? So there is some context to what is going on here. This is nothing new. And the report that's before you and the findings that we have made relative to the eligibility of the area for TIF really kind of further supports what you generally already know about the downtown area. And the downtown area, it's a small map, and I don't know if all of you can see it, and it's, you're not meant to see all of the parcels and all of the details, but it's really to be a very quick visual summary. And I noticed that Malik, our planner who assisted me with this, I think must have fell in love with the fall colors. It seems to have a fall theme going on to it. But anyway, if you squint your eyes, the lighter colors on the map are the parcels that have fewer criteria associated with them. The mid-range, the dark brown and the darker tones below that are the parcels that exhibit more, at least three, four, or more criteria as required by statute to refer to this area or establish this area as what we call a conservation district. And there are several ways for it. You can make a TIF area eligible. Conservation is one of those. So by squinting your eyes, this is really supposed to be just a really quick snapshot. I think you can clearly see, just by looking at this graphic, that you have a lot of the properties, a far majority of the properties exhibiting at least four or more of the criteria as defined in statute to make this area eligible for tax increment financing. Having said that, the other details about the work we did, we did a survey of all the properties. This is a walk-by survey. We walked the entire area over two times in early March to record all of the information we could see on the site, and then worked with staff subsequent to get more information on the assessed value of the property, any internal conditions with regard to building code issues, any other site issues, issues regarding utilities, lack thereof. Stormwater is clearly a big issue, as is many older downtowns. The fact is, these areas were built without any stormwater management, and some areas certainly are prone to flooding or could be. And then the other summary is, we have an area that now covers, according to this map, that stretches on the north from Naperville, Chicago, down to Dallas, the east-west streets. Now, I forgot.
Lincoln and Linden.
Lincoln and Linden, on the extent of the drawing there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And Linden.
Okay, and then the east-west on the, along the railroad tracks? That's the one I was thinking of.
Oh, I'm sorry. Quinsey and Linden?
Yeah, and then east-west, the boundaries.
Irving and...
The eastern boundary on the railroad is what street?
This, here?
No, the north-south street.
I'm sorry, here, right?
Well, all the way over.
Yeah, all the way over.
Here, Richmond.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And then the western boundary?
The western boundary is Williams.
Yeah, thank you. I couldn't remember. That area is described as approximately 100 acres, covering 446 structures on 404 parcels. The reason that there are more structures than there are parcels because in many cases, we're also looking at garages, the condition of garages, or any other substantial improvement on the property consistent with statute, and this includes 37 blocks or parts thereof. So with that, I'm not going to bore you with the specific details of the 13 findings and the criteria that we evaluated. It's all documented in this report and then summarized on this map. The bottom line, we are recommending to the village that if you desire to proceed with TIF, this area would be eligible for TIF. So that'll take any questions?
Khan, I'm sure the people watching at home have the question of why on the east-west corridor that's there, put the map back up, please. On the east-west corridor along the railroad tracks, which is, a lot especially to the west, is residential. Why that's included in the downtown B1 business district, and whether criteria for TIF that we would meet more or less of the qualifications if the residential parts were excluded.
You want me to?
Well, part of this goes back to the zoning that went into place circa 2007, when there had been a hodgepodge of different uses along the railroad tracks there. There were some older apartments that were removed, and then subsequently, another row home development was put into place on the west side of Cass. On the east side of Cass, along Quincy specifically, we have a lot of, you know, former manufacturing types of uses, warehousing, things that were not necessarily thought to be the best buffer to the single-family residential to the north and to the south on either side, really. So one of the tenants of the transit-oriented development strategy was to encourage mixed use and then some higher density in certain areas of the community to build in the folks that would be able to walk to the train and patronize the businesses downtown. So with that, back in 2007, the board did approve of a map amendment to basically homogenize the various uses, make them R5, which would allow for that higher-density residential over time.
Okay. Thank you.
That was important that you understood the planning context for that decision. So what this eligibility does is just simply advance the idea that the areas that are shaded, although true, some are outside the business zone, these areas have an influence or impact on the business area in that some of the areas that were identified are envisioned to be redeveloped over the long term for some higher-density uses. However, and we need to recognize also, in the near term, there are some issues that also need to be addressed. Forget the fact that there could or could not be redevelopment. There's a lack of utilities, there's stormwater issues as we understand it, there's some code issues in these buildings. Some of these buildings within this R5 area, as you know, are quite dilapidated, and we've documented that on each parcel. And for existing homeowners, the benefit of being in a TIF district, quite frankly, is some of the tax increment could be available to homeowners to actually help improve their properties. That's also the idea, is to upgrade the value, improve the existing land. It's not always about completely redeveloping, so we need to keep that in mind.
Board have any questions?
Khan, maybe just a clarification. There's some properties on that map that are already redeveloped and productive and would not qualify under the TIF standards, and they're mixed in with properties that do qualify. And I guess maybe explain for the public how that impacts the overall qualification of the district, particularly when you have some gaps or lack of contiguity within the district.
Yeah, thank you. That's a very good question and need for clarification, what I actually did thought about, so I was prepared. Yes, one of the fundamental misunderstandings about TIF and how it works, first of all, not every property within a TIF district needs to qualify. What we look for, and the statute provides for, is a preponderance of these factors being present within the larger districts. So that's absolutely true. In fact, this map does identify the number of parcels that, in fact, only meet one, and in many, in some cases, meet none of the criteria. But the point is, when you're assembling property to create a redevelopment opportunity over the long term, there are clearly going to be some intervening parcels that may or may not qualify, but you may need them as a part of a redevelopment scheme. Now, obviously, if there were a number of those parcels and the qualifications weren't evident, we wouldn't be talking about TIF. The relative number of those parcels, as you can roughly see on this map, are relatively minimal, meaning the number of parcels that don't qualify for TIF, and they're fairly dispersed and spread out, and they're not clustered all tightly together. So again, this is the reason that some even recently improved properties are included because there needs to be the unity of these parcels so we can create some larger redevelopment options for future development.
Anything else?
Next steps?
Yeah, next step.
Yeah.
Recommendation for the next step?
Oh, was that it? If the board does, or the committee does, agree that this is eligible, the next step would be to direct us, as per our contract, to enter into the second phase of the planning, which is the preparation of a redevelopment plan and program. And again, much of that in terms of what's required, and that is also prescribed in statute. The community is undertaking a comprehensive plan update, and I know that as a part of that plan, you're taking a specific look at the downtown area again. Much of that information will be integrated into what we're going to be doing as well.
And just the only other comment, I guess, would be that there is a lot of public involvement throughout the process to determine whether TIF is in the best interest for this area and the village. So I don't know that there's, it's a little premature for questions tonight, probably, but that time will come.
Yeah, well, the first thing that we wanted to do was find out whether your estimate of how many the 13 criteria would meet, because if it meant two, we would pretty much stop there. So we'll go forward, and we will certainly encourage and then get more public involvement in this, especially because in conjunction with the comprehensive plan, there have been discussions about, do we want to reformulate our downtown boundaries and really, you know, stretch that plan out into more of a, you know, block-wide rather than just two sides of Cass? And so there's going to be a lot of discussion about people, from people who live there, people in the surrounding area, and people from the neighborhoods in whole, because the bigger the downtown, the more productive and successful it is. We've seen that with all of our neighbors, and at least they've been guinea pigs, and we didn't have to try something, so.
Yeah, and it's a good point about the neighbors. You know, the other thing that we need to recognize about the, this issue about looking at tax increment financing, you know, tax increment financing, when it started some 20, 25 years ago, you know, a lot of the emphasis at that time was really on these older downtown areas, and now we're addressing corridors like 63rd Street because 25 years later, now they're declining. So, you know, very common, is my point, very common that you would find TIF utilized in downtown areas, particularly downtown areas that are as old as yours is and some of the other adjacent communities. And a lot of these railroad communities were built at a time where there was no planning and so forth. So it's a very common tool now in a lot of downtowns.
And speaking of common tools, Khan, could you explain that sometimes, that depending on what the plans are, what the uses are intended to be, that sometimes you take a district and you bust it up into different TIFs? It doesn't have to all be, it's not an all-or-nothing proposition. So would you explain how common it is that some towns have 12 TIFs and they're all, they're either blocks or they're actually contiguous?
Actually, that's true. In fact, I'm currently dealing with, one, a very large process in the city of Rochelle, which is way out by DeKalb, looking at its commercial corridors, both 251 North and South and east-west, and it's, most of it's commercial area, and they're looking at the potential of three separate TIF districts, either staged over time, done at one time, or, you know, some combination of that. So it is very common. The good thing about the, well, there are several issues with regard to moving along and in subdividing a TIF district. And the most fundamental reason that you want to be very careful about doing that is making sure whatever subdivision you end up with, that that part is eligible on its own, because you can't borrow eligibility from one area and transfer it to another. So if we subdivide it off, the area on its own has to stand. And in this case, we looked at the larger area because we felt there was some benefit of improvements that would happen, utility, stormwater redevelopment that would happen throughout this district. But certainly, there are communities that have subdivided these districts into separate districts. Again, we haven't analyzed that. In this case, we wouldn't know how many.
Right.
And what the appropriate approach would be if you wanted to go down that road. We looked at, and really, the easier thing for us to have done for you, most economically, is to look at it as a whole, and then you can always come back and, you know, take a different approach if you so choose.
Just so that, you know, if down the road or whatever, we do decide to subdivide, it's not going to be something that people are just like, you know, where did this come from? That that's, that may or may not be a factor in every TIF. All right. Thanks very much. Actually, chief, I'm going to open this up for public comments because since Mr. Savoy's here, if anybody from the public has any questions, he's here to answer them, and he can do so better in this type of setup that we have here that, you know, so if anybody has anything, please step up and introduce yourself by name and address, and we'll go from there.
I have a question. My name's Audrey Payne, and I'm from 29 South Williams. And you asked the question to have him describe the difference, the reasons why you'd have multiple TIFs in one plan. I'd like to know why you would want to do that, or what different types there are that would make you want to choose section by section.
The fundamental question really has to do with regard to the timing of development and how much investment the city wants, or in this case, the village wants to put forward with regard to TIF itself. If you believe that one area is going to develop in advance of another area, you might TIF that area and then wait to do another TIF for another area simply because development may not be ready. I think what we envision as a part of the larger downtown is that all of the area is potentially an appropriate development area that investment might occur. But, so it's a question of timing. The basic issue is, you know, you don't want to get too much ahead of the curve with regard to development activity, because once TIF is created, we have a limited timeline. We have 23 years in which to see new development occur and to utilize the TIF funds that are available to us. And I've seen some communities go through this, and in my case, you know, in some cases, kind of squander the value of TIF because it was just done simply too early in advance of development really being ready. I, you know, I don't think that's the case here. Clearly, the communities around you are doing it. You're seeing a lot of new downtown development. We've worked in downtown Clarendon Hills. I know a little bit about that community, and others. So that is the reason why we think doing this comprehensively probably makes some sense, but...
I mean, look at the last, definitely four years, almost five years, with the economic downturn. They took a big chunk out of a lot of TIFs, and so even though they can apply for and get 12-year extensions, when you lose five years on a whole big, huge development plan, that's a big loss.
Yeah, and it has to do a lot to do with the financing of how these projects are done, usually 10, 15, 20-year, you know, bonds that it might be needed, so.
Anyone else? Please introduce yourself, sir.
Hi, I'm Gary Armstrong, and my question revolves more around the finance of the TIF districts. How does it affect the other taxing bodies? Do they lose money? Do they gain money? Is there anything they can do to benefit from the TIF district as it's, because my understanding is you freeze property tax for a period of time. So how does that affect the other taxing bodies, and how is it good or bad for those other taxing bodies? Thank you.
There's a lot of questions.
That would be carried.
I'm trying to answer the most that I can remember. First of all, and fundamentally, while it is true, once the TIF is established, sorry, I'm turning my back to you. The TIF is established, the property tax base is frozen at whatever that level is. But remember, districts continue not only to receive taxes at whatever the level is, say, 2013, if this were put in place in 2013, you know, forever, they just don't get that increment. But the other thing, you also need to remember that the taxing districts can actually experience increases in their revenue by raising the rate. So, you know, that's, you know, very common. So it's not as if, you know, the taxing districts do not have the ability to receive any more income from these properties than they would, say, in 2013. If they change the rate that affects everyone in the district, that rate change will also bring in more money, even though the base is frozen, because the rate will allow for the additional increment. So that's one thing. Now, the second, I think the second part of your answer, or question, is a bit broader because different districts are impacted differently. Some districts, school districts, library districts, fire protection districts, I believe, actually have our made-whole, if you will, as a part of the amendments to the statute back around 1999, whereby, for instance, if you're a school district, and we're bringing new residential into, you know, redevelopment and new residential development into this area, and we're generating new... area, and we're generating new kids to your school, right off the top of the TIF revenue, the statute requires us to pay for that kid essentially, per the state aid formula. Library districts have a similar situation. I forgot how the basis and that increase is determined, based on utilization of libraries and visits and so forth. And then fire protection, again, I don't remember exactly, but that's just a characteristic. So some of these districts, you know, via state statute, are, you would say, somewhat protected, somewhat covered by that. The other taxing districts, as I said before, would enjoy any increase over time as a result of any tax rate increase. Did I, I don't know if I got to all of your, okay.
Yeah, because the development increases the, increases the assessed value, and the taxes go up, and that's the ideal, is, of course, to get the property developed. Thanks, Ken. Anyone else? Yes.
Yeah, my name's Tim Casey. I live at 1417 Wesley Court. And while that was true, other taxing bodies will be transferring the burden to their residences while these other commercial properties are frozen. So while they might have to go to their people to get a rate increase and do a referendum, it caps the ability of them to raise funds to run their program. So the 2% to 3% they might get each year from CPI per the cap, they're going to be getting it from the residents, because you now have a pool of properties that they can't get it from. So it ends up being a de facto tax increase on people that have homes. I just wanted to make that point.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Savoy. Appreciate it. The automated traffic law enforcement system. Board to hear the annual review on the village's automated traffic enforcement program. Chief?
Good evening. Last year, it was decided that the police department would provide an annual review of the red light photo enforcement program. And I have a quick PowerPoint. Or not? Power statistics are based on the activity of the red light traffic control device at the intersection of Naperville and CAS. The statistics are starting from September 1st, 2011, and ending August 31st, 2012. Our officers viewed a total of 6,108 suspected violations. 1,264 or 20.69% were approved as violations. 4,844 of those are viewed, or 79.31% were not approved or rejected by the viewing officers. 6,070 violations, or 99.38% of those violations turned right on red. That's where they failed to stop, not, we did not take into consideration the stop line or if there's not, there's no signs that says no turn on red. This is for just basically failing to stop when required to do so by law. 24 violations, or 0.39% of those vehicles proceeded straight through, and 14, or 0.23% of those viewed turned left. Officers spent approximately 107 hours within the last year reviewing these videos. All videos reviewed by on-duty personnel. We had officers on administrative leave, administrative duty or basically light duty. Those officers were trained and assigned to view these violations, thus freeing the officers' time to stay up on the street. No overtime was involved in the viewing of the videos. And as usual, I'd like to show you a couple of videos of violations. There's one in particular I brought your attention to.
Jesus.
And this one, you'll see the bicyclist, bicyclist had to stop to avoid a collision there.
99 bottles up there. Yeah. Those people do not live in Westmont. Make that clear.
I don't know.
But those are the people that don't want the red light camera. Now we know why. I like the application of the brakes.
After the fact. Make sure they get a clip.
Some of these, you try to figure out, what were they thinking, and I don't know.
Icy road. Follow the guy in front of you.
This, I don't know. It's not, that is not, that's not the same truck, no.
So how they haven't T-boned somebody is, it's just a miracle, isn't it?
One topic is always revenue. From September 1st, 2011 through August 31st, 2012, villages received $39,218 in fines from the red light enforcement program. These approximate costs are associated with the, the approximate costs associated with the administration of the program, officers' time, the adjudicator for hearings, and the review of violations and appeals. The same period was $7,329.75. After cost, the villages realized $31,888.25 for the program over the past year. There's still an outstanding amount of $14,800 because of late or unpaid fees. If you fail to pay the fee within a certain time period, which is 30 days, you get, your fee doubles to $200 after that second period of 30 days, we forward the fines onto collections.
At any point, can you take their license?
If they have more than five or more unpaid violations with our vendor, which would include Redspeed or in Westmont alone, we can notify the Secretary of State of that, and their license can be suspended, similar to what we do with parking tickets. Since the inception of our program, the villages received $132,288.83. Our cost associated with the administration of the program through August 31st is $30,728.7. After cost, the villages realized $107,451 since the beginning of the program, which began in February, I'm sorry, February, we had a grace period, March of 2009. Accident data, the number of accidents in the same direction as the red light cameras, as you see it's there, in 2008, we had four, 2009, static at four, 2010, we had a reduction down to two accidents, 2011, down to three. And for the first eight months of 2012, we see a reduction, again, down to one. Now there, again, we don't know what the last four months of the year are going to be, and we're hopeful that it remains at this number. Since installation of the red light photo enforcement, we're unaware of any accidents at CAS in Naperville where the cameras played any role in the cause or the accident or caused any driver to overact due to the cameras' presence, if you remember back in 2009. And every year since, there's a concern that the red lights actually will cause more accidents, rear-end accidents. We're not seeing that trend occurring at our intersection. Since the inception of the program, we've seen a reduction in approved violations. In 2009, we had 1,582. 2010, we dropped to 1,030. 2011, we're down to 1,084. In 2012, currently, for the first eight months, we're at 879. Our trend is showing that we may track up a little bit higher than the last two years. However, we don't know the reason for that. It also could be that there's four months left, you know, they, we could see a reduction. Also, this spring, as we all know, we had a very good, easy winter and easy spring. We had a lot warmer weather, a lot less snow, and thus, usually in the severe weather or the inclement weather, we see the reductions decline. It's a possibility that that was a reason for it as well. A reduction in the amount of approved violations is an indicator the enforcement program is effective in changing driver habits. We believe that statement is still true in this case, due to the fact that we're still down from the original 2009 figures, which also was a nine-month figure as well. But you can see that we were down a couple hundred tickets and violations, and we tend to believe that, as you still have the reduction, that shows that the program is effective and working. And with that, I'll entertain an answer, any questions from the board or from the public?
Thank you, sir. We'll be on to new business. Preliminary final plat request, 1006 Beninford Lane. Board to consider an ordinance approving a preliminary final plat of subdivision request from the Village of Westmont to subdivide a detention basin out of Falcon Villa's Lot 23 at 1006 Beninford Lane.
Good evening. That description actually sums it up. Basically, you all are very familiar with the, the discussions we've had for going on more in a year regarding the maintenance of the detention basin, and it is the village's desire to take on that detention facility and the related maintenance, and, not a stipulation, but by taking ownership of the parcel. Currently, the detention basin is, or that portion of the detention basin, is contained on a, in an easement on a private lot in Falcon Villa's subdivision, a townhome subdivision on Beninford. And in order to do the transaction of ownership, the subdivision is required to carve out the portion that we have interest in, which is the northern portion of that basin, the main basin.
Yeah, and that, it's hard to see on there, but it also cuts across.
Everything that's gray is part of the stormwater management facility in the backyards of all of these lots.
But the part that the village is going to take over ends at the end of the, that little jog in the lot.
Yes.
Across the drainage ditch.
Exactly. Right here. That's the subdivision line on the plat. So everything north, we would take ownership of.
Any questions or discussion from the board? Public? Thank you, Director May.
Thank you.
Next one, waiver request, 55 West 57th Street. Board to consider an ordinance waiving a public sidewalk requirement.
Good evening.
Hello.
I requesting that waiver. So I asking the board to approve that.
Joe?
This parcel on 57th Street is landlocked. It's also in front of the future 57th Street, which has not yet been built, and there are also no public sidewalks leading to the applicant's home. So he's requesting this waiver and to pay a fee in lieu.
What's the cash and lieu payment?
It's, let's see, I think, I think it's about $5 a square foot. So engineering's working that out, and then they will, and then the applicant will pay that as part of the permit cost.
Well, when 57th gets completed and everything, are there going to, is there planned to have sidewalks along there?
Right. Yeah, you would have the typical public improvements that you would see along a street.
Do we need a cash and lieu payment if we're going to put them in eventually when the?
Yes, that's the whole reason.
To fund it.
It helps fund the sidewalk installation that the village ultimately pays for.
Okay. Sorry.
It's okay.
Any discussion from the board?
So everyone that would be putting a house in there would have to do the same thing?
They'd either have to put in the sidewalk, which at the time may be a sidewalk to nowhere, or cash and lieu, if we have, yeah, do it for this owner, probably do it for others. This is unique, though, because they have no, it's landlocked, they don't front the street.
Right.
Right. He'll be accessing his home from the rear through a private drive that the neighbors all share. So it is a very unique situation.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any question or comment? Okay, we'll vote on this on Monday? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, and by the way, staff's recommendation is to grant this, correct?
Yes.
Development request at 111 West Ogden Avenue. Board to consider an ordinance approving a commercial masonry waiver request from Taco Bar and Salsa Grill to expand the outdoor cooler in the rear parking lot of this restaurant. Hello.
My name is Jose Oliver. I'm the owner of the restaurant. And by the way, the name is Taco Grill and Salsa Bar.
Yeah, it's backwards on there. Salsa Bar. I just read what they give me, okay?
Yeah, I notice.
I've been there, I still go there, and I don't call it what it is. Okay.
Yeah, the reason why I'm here is, our restaurant has a very small walking cooler for the amount of business that we do, and the bill is required to have masonry in order for me to get anything bigger, but that would imply a lot of money. I mean, that's, you know, a project of $2,000 would go to $50,000. So that's why I'm here to, to see if you guys can help me out.
Mr. Oliver, how long has the Taco Grill and Salsa Bar been there?
Twelve years.
Forever. The average age of a restaurant, when it's successful, is three years, so congratulations.
Thank you.
We've got the photograph of the existing cooler. Do we have anything from staff that shows where it's proposed to go that you can put up, please?
This is the location in the rear. This is the existing cooler, and the proposed cooler is proposed to be 20 by 20, and it would take up one and a half parking spaces.
So you're just going to sort of piggyback it?
Yeah. Well, actually, what we're going to do is, I have a walking cooler that is 20 by 20. I'm going to replace it, basically. It would be the same thing as there is there, it's just going to be a different one, because there are panels that need to be attached, so you cannot just get different panels and put it on that one. So it has to be one whole system, which is what is going to happen.
Okay. So you'll still access it from the inside?
Yes. Everything will stay the same. The only, the only thing that would be different, it would be the side, inside. Right now, God, I'm paying too much electricity and small walk, small coolers besides the walking cooler that we already have. As it is right now, I got four to five deliveries a week. This will cut up two deliveries a week.
Is that visible from the parking lot of, is it next to, what's on the east?
That would be Boston Market.
Is that visible from the parking lot, the back of it, visible from Boston Market?
If it isn't, if you see it from the back of Boston Market, it is visible.
Okay. Sometimes, we on the board also have to be the bearer of bad tidings, and I think it's a good idea, Mr. Oliver, and I'm in favor of it. But when I look at the picture and I see that you're starting to accumulate a lot of stuff that doesn't belong back there, since I for one will be voting that you, in favor of your request, I would like to see like the extra milk cartons and metal rods and all of that go away, because in this picture, there's a lot of junk back there.
Well, we, we just did a cleanup. If you notice, those are things that we use in our walking cooler. We just got new shelves. And I guess when they took the picture, they, we were in the process of cleaning. We're still cleaning.
Okay, because it looks like everything was disposed of back there.
Yeah, it was, it was in the back, and I believe there, there are certain things, and like the, there are certain things that will still there, because we doing business every day, and we had to put it outside.
I understand the lawnmower's got to be there, but I'm just telling you, if there's a lot of extraneous stuff that's going to be stored around an even bigger thing, that's not fair to your neighbors.
No, we, we actually trying to keep it nice. We just did our, we just, how's it called, our parking lot, we, we have just, whatever it's called, painted, whatever, I can't remember how they call it. We patched it. So we, we on top of things. I mean, our.
Hey, just checking, because, you know, I've got the picture with the submission.
Yeah, I mean, you got, you got, I don't know who took that picture, but it wasn't me.
Okay.
Well, could we require some kind of screening if this is an issue?
No, code, well, code enforcement would enforce it if there, it becomes, you know, if it doesn't stay cleaned up.
Well, I, I can tell you, I've been in business there for 12 years, and I haven't had any problems. I mean, you can check it. That's, every time that anybody comes and checks us out, we're fine.
Okay, good. And Boston Market's been there about the same length of time?
Boston Market's a little bit longer than us, but.
About 15. So you've been good neighbors all these years, no complaints from them, so.
I have no complaints for, on my side, and they don't have any complaints on their side, so.
Great.
I think we're doing a great thing in there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll vote on it on Monday night. We'll vote on it on Monday night, but you don't have to come in, thanks.
You may want to go to the public on that also.
Yeah. Anybody from the public have any questions or comments on this issue?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Jill, there's a loss of one and a half parking spots. That has no impact on their code compliance?
Correct, we did a parking check, and they have more than enough, so they should be ample even with the cooler expansion.
Next, new business issue D, preliminary plat of subdivision request, 243 East 56th Street. Board to consider the following requests from McNauton Development in order to build eight new single-family homes. One, an ordinance approving a preliminary plat of subdivision, and two, an ordinance approving payment of a fee in lieu for the 56th Street improvements.
Good evening. My name is John Berry, I'm with McNauton Development.
Paul McNauton, McNauton Development, good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you. Just a little bit about us, McNauton Development's been in the building business for over 30 years. Most of our business has been in the south-southwest suburbs. We are working currently on our first development in Westmont along Hidden View Drive, just east of Cass. We have four new homes that are, the first of which is going to open up this weekend. We're very excited about this opportunity here along Oak Avenue. We are not requesting any variations with this proposal. We, we were given a unanimous recommendation by the Plan Commission a couple weeks ago. They did request that we speak with the village forester and work out our issues on that. We have done that as of last week. They also asked us to keep special attention to the stormwater management. We have submitted our preliminary engineering, we are working on our final, and we are abiding by the village's stormwater study for this area and the required release rates. Overall, we feel this subdivision will be a fine complement to the existing Fairfield on the other side of Oak Avenue and a fine addition to the village as a whole.
We know that it went from one lot into eight lots.
Yes.
And you're aware that we, well, it seems like recently, I don't know how recently it was, dropped our lot, our lot coverage percentage.
Yes.
So please keep that in mind when you.
We're, yes, we're aware of that percentage also, yes.
Good.
Yes.
Yes, because it's all for non-permeable surfaces.
Yes, we've been using the decks over on Hidden View versus the patios is one example.
Okay, good. Because when you come in and you say no variations, it may mean yet, so.
Well, we, we did build four homes over on Hidden View, and we, we were able to make that work without any variations either.
And they look great.
Yep. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any comments or questions from the board?
Well, looks like the economy must be getting a little bit better if they're willing to get back into the game.
We're trying to do our part.
How big are these homes?
These homes will probably max out on the floor area ratio, probably around 3,500 square feet.
The second part, you're looking for a payment of a fee in lieu for the 56th Street improvements?
That's correct.
Okay. Jill, you want to address that? What is that, what improvements is for the?
This is for the 56th Street side only. This would cover street widening, curb and gutter, storm sewers. The public sidewalk is already existing. We've checked with Public Works, and they're comfortable with this request, but it needs to be approved by the village board.
Okay. Do you have a square footage number? Do you have a ballpark figure? Do you know where we're at with that?
I believe the ordinance is $100 per lineal foot of frontage. We have approximately 165 feet of frontage.
Okay.
Does that include lighting? Any kind of street lighting in the fee in lieu of?
Does it include street, street lighting?
Any kind of street lighting involved in that?
Steve, I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
When the, the fee rate was selected, all the public improvements were included in that, and it was translated to a linear foot calculation, you know, for just such an application. So conceptually it does, and that's taken account into a number. How often we revisit that number, I don't know the last time it was looked at, but that's currently what the code rate is.
I think maybe we want to revisit that and find out how long ago that number was set.
Certainly. It's a good idea.
Because it's been a while.
After Monday.
Yes, there's probably some nods behind you, yes.
We're going to do it over the weekend and Monday.
We'll let you know Monday what we think of good numbers.
Tough crowd, right, okay.
Okay. Anything else? Good, we'll vote on Monday, thanks.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Roof replacement contract award. Board to consider an ordinance approving a construction contract bid award for Olson Roofing Company, Inc. for the south roof replacement at the Westmont Fire Department Headquarters Station, 6015 South Cass Avenue.
Good evening.
Chief?
Good evening, thank you. The south roofing structure on Fire Headquarters Station is in need of reconstruction, including the removal and replacement of roofing insulation system. Plans and specifications were prepared by Baxter and Woodman Engineering, and I have Adam Steck here tonight, he's the design engineer for this project. Six bids were received for the project on September 19th of this year. Included in the bid was a request for two lump sum prices whereby the contractor was asked to provide bids for replacing a roof either this fall or next spring. According to the bidding documents, the village reserves the right to award the work either in the fall of 2012 or the spring of 2013. We did this because of the lateness into the year, and we're not sure what the weather is going to be. Don't know if we're going to be able to get the process going and get it done, but that's why we drew it up this way. I do have Adam here tonight if you have any specific questions of him.
We kind of known this was coming.
Kind of a timeframe. As of how long would it take to do the job?
If the weather cooperates, it might be a week, but we're giving him two months, just because of, to give him the flexibility.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Just want to mention too, the low bidder was Olson Roofing Company out of Aurora, and their fall bid was $63,700, and their spring 2013 bid was $67,800. Baxter and Woodman estimated the cost to be around $72,000, so it came in low.
Came in low. Good.
They've been in business how many years?
I don't recall exactly, but I believe almost 100 years. It's a really old reputable company.
Been around a while.
Well, hopefully it'll be done this fall, that would be nice. Any comment or questions from the public? Good, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks, Sam.
Last item for new business, mayor pro tem slash presiding officer rotational order. Board to consider an ordinance changing the mayor pro tem slash presiding officer rotational order so that the same mayor pro tem is presiding officer at both the committee of the whole meeting and the regular village board meeting. That would be the Thursday night, if you're mayor pro tem, you would then be mayor pro tem unless the mayor's here the following Monday voting night. This was brought forward by trustee Fleming, requested this item. Any comment?
Well, I'm just looking at this in a situation, and I've talked about this in years past, this is nothing new for me. I feel that if you're going to preside over a committee of the whole meeting, which is the public portion of the meeting, I think the individual should finish and complete the task, which is the voting meeting on Monday. I don't think that it puts any, any real change or burden on anything the way we're doing things at this point in time. Alls it does is the person that you see in the chair on Thursday night is the same person you see on Monday, of course, unless the mayor is actually there. So I mean, and going forward, it, the rotation would still stay the same, so even if the mayor was there on Thursday night but not there on Monday, that particular person would take the chair, or vice versa. So it wouldn't be necessarily they would be there both nights, it could be just one night or the other. But I think going forward, at this point in time, I really think we need a little bit more continuity in how we're dealing with things, and I'd just like to see us put it as presiding over Thursday and Monday.
And I think while the mayor's concentrating on getting well, it doesn't look like so much of a musical chairs covering for him while he's recovering, so I think it's a good idea trustee Fleming brought this up.
I'm on board, but I think I like the continuity issue also. I think it just shows a, like trustee Fleming was saying, same person on Thursday, same person on Monday.
Unless the mayor comes back.
Exactly. And, you know, it's not like we're doing anything different than we were before, except for someone gets the possibility of doing it two times instead of one time and rotating it that way.
Slowing it down a little bit.
Yeah.
Now, I will say, as we all know, trustee Clubenow is out of town on FEMA, she is due back in on Friday. I did get a phone call from her, and we did talk about this a little bit, and she was wondering if we could put a sunset clause on this. I don't see a reason why we would need to put a sunset clause on this. It's not going to make any changes.
You don't need a sunset clause if they want to change it. Future boards, they just change it.
Well, even if we go a year from now, and we see that something happened, this wasn't working.
Right.
Why wouldn't we change it back the other way?
Change it back the other way, if you want.
Yeah, no need for a sunset clause.
I don't think that'd be the issue, I think, but it gives us the opportunity.
Mayor coming back will sunset it anyway.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm sure come Monday night, I'm sure that trustee Clubenow is going to make some comments about that and her reasoning's why, and I'm not going to sit here and try to tell you what her reasoning's why are, and I'll let her do that on Monday.
But that's, that's her right to do it, and we'll listen to what she has to say, and we'll vote the way it happens, and that's all.
I mean, my, my whole thing was, I think, just from a point of continuity, as you say, until the mayor gets better, that you're looking at the same person two nights instead of one night. That's all.
Yeah, so I think we're all in favor of it, aren't we? Okay, good. Anybody from the public? Anybody from the public have any? Come on, Audrey, do you have any, do you have any opinion on that? Anybody from the public have any comment or question on that? There's a section on miscellaneous, which I don't think we have any miscellaneous objects to deal with tonight.
I have one housekeeping item. On the McNauton request, there's two requests, the plat of subdivision and the waiver. The way we draft the ordinance, it's one ordinance covering both items, so I'll just clarify that. So you'll be voting once for both items on Monday.
Great. So trustee Seneca knows how many items to move to approve?
Yes.
Trying to save her voice.
Yes. That said, we do have an executive session tonight based on personnel and threatened litigation. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to go into executive session.
So moves, Seneca.
Second, Scott.
Call call, please.
Trustee Emery?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Trustee Seneca?
Yes. Thank you very much.